We're on, thanks.
All right, good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting the Town Council Regular Session Meeting for May 7, 2025, to order. And at this time, we will begin, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor White, if you could lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilor White. Okay. Item number two on the agenda, roll call. Looks like all councilors are present and accounted for. Thank you very much, councilors. Next item on our agenda is public forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening?
One at a time, please.
Seeing none, I will close public forum at 7:01. Item number five on the agenda is to consider acceptance of minutes. Councilors, we have three sets of minutes this evening. The first is the April 2, 2025 Workshop Minutes for the Water Master Plan. And at this time, I'd accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Councilor Lamatina. Any discussion or changes? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilor Glazberg?
Aye.
Councilor Lamatina?
Aye.
Councilor Dorblut?
Aye.
Councilor White?
Upstee.
Councilor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Conley?
Aye.
All right. The second set of minutes are the minutes from the April 16, 2025, non-public meeting. And I would accept a motion at this time to approve those minutes. Thank you, Councilor White. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. This is a non-public meeting-minute session, so I will call the roll. Or if you could call the roll, please.
Councilor Glazberg?
Aye.
Councilor Lamatina?
Aye.
Councilor Dorblut?
Aye.
Councilor White?
Aye.
Councilor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Conley?
Aye.
And the third set of minutes is the minutes from the April 16, 2025 Town Council Meeting. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve those.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor White. Any discussion or changes? All right, seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilor Glazberg?
Aye.
Councilor Lamatina?
Aye.
Councilor Dorblut?
Aye.
Councilor White?
Aye.
Councilor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Conley?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much, councilors. Moving on to item six. This is nominations, appointments, elections, and resignations. And today, we have one appointment and one reappointment. The first item is the appointment of Linda Boye. Linda, I apologize in advance for the pronunciation of your name, Ziernowski. Appointment to the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission with term expiration April 2027. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Glazberg. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Is there any discussion on Ms. Ziernowski's appointment? Councilor Glazberg?
I met Linda two months ago. She has been coming to the commission meetings as a spectator to kind of see if it was something that she'd be interested in joining. I look forward to approving her tonight.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Okay. I was pleased to see the application and really excited to approve this appointment. Seeing no other discussion, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilor Glazberg?
Aye.
Councilor Lamatina?
Aye.
Councilor Dorblut?
Aye.
Councilor White?
Aye.
Councilor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Conley?
Aye.
Okay. We have one reappointment this evening. This is Dominic Rovetto, reappointment as Commissioner to the Housing Authority with a term expiration of April 2030. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve that reappointment.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Dorblut. Any discussion on Dominic Rovetto's reappointment? I appreciate Mr. Rovetto's attention to detail and the concise nature of the application. Wasted no time, and I appreciate that. Okay, seeing no other discussion, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilor Glazberg?
Aye.
Councilor Lamatina?
Aye.
Councilor Dorblut?
Aye.
Councilor White?
Aye.
Councilor Blackstone?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Conley?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. Item seven is the report of the Town Manager. And so at this time, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First in my unwritten report, we're looking at June 25 for a potential goal-setting session. I've heard back from the facilitator from Primex, and we just wanted to check with the council to see if their calendars, if that's okay. But then we know it's the week before the Fourth of July. One other question I had, that I know some other committees have been doing with the goal-setting session, didn't know if the council would like to, is invite department heads into it as well. That way, it gives a chance for them to, you know, see what their department goals are, as well as chime in on some of the ones that the council may have as an overall, you know, some things that we may not know, why did we try these things in the past, what's the, you know, some of the history. I didn't know if that would be something interesting. I just wanted to throw that out. And you don't have to answer tonight, you can think about it. But June 25 for everybody else. The next item in my written report is that we did receive the Plan New Hampshire Shiret Report. We collaborated in October with Plan New Hampshire, and did a community design shiret to enhance the downtown and riverfront areas. They did comprehensive site visits, stakeholder interviews, and public listening sessions. And they identified significant challenges and developed a vision along with recommendations to improve access, connectivity, resilience, and economic fertility while preserving New Market's distinctive charm. Some of the summary of the findings are for connectivity of riverfront access to improve pedestrian links along the Lamprey, evaluate new access points to Haran Point, and clarify public versus private access at Rivermore Landing. They recommended Shanda Park enhancements, environmental resilience of doing a living shore lies, city realize riverbanks, and address water quality and invasive species. For downtown mobility and safety is to redesign South Main Street with complete streets elements, wider sidewalks, bike lanes, and traffic calming, and consider converting a section of South Main in front of the old fire station, that area, to one way to improve pedestrian space and parking. And finally, well, placemaking, which is transfer Willie House frontage into Civic, flexible Civic Plaza for events and gatherings, which expands opportunities for festivals and markets and public art. For parking, pursue shared parking solutions and improve wayfinding and plan additional EV charging stations. And finally, economic development, update the town's master plan to align with the shiret goals, and revive the economic development committee and explore public-private partnership for future projects. We will be using this as a resource when updating the master plan and implementing new ordinances from the planning department, as well as other projects that we may have over the coming years. And if you, it's a very interesting and eye-opening document. Just reminding, special election to choose a charter commissioner, commissioners will be held this coming Tuesday, May 13, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall. We do need councilors to sign up to work the election and have, we need a quorum available to close of the polls to count the votes. Only Council Blackstone cannot count the votes because he's on the ballot. Finally, I just want to give a summary of the May 2 incident and response procedures. As you're aware, in the early hours of Friday, May 2, the New Market Police Department, who was assisted by the Seco's Emergency Response Team, which is basically a SWAT team for the Secos, located and apprehended Mark Allen McLean at approximately 4:10 a.m. Now faces multiple felony charges. The shelter-in-place order issued out of an abundance of caution was lifted after about two hours, so in about 2:00 in the morning. I just wanted to provide a clear summary for all the council members. The civic-ready alert system and social media were used to notify residents. We're reviewing civic-ready notification process to confirm whether alerts reached all intended recipients or only registered users. Due to the urgency of the situation and limited staffing, it was not feasible to provide real-time updates to local officials, including the council chair and the director of Finance Administration, my absence. I personally maintain direct communication with the chief from my vacation and received updates as situation evolved. Please also understand that some of the questions raised relate to an ongoing investigation. Information pertaining that investigation will be limited to avoid compromising the case, so we can't say much about the case itself. I just want to clarify several points that may have arisen. Councilors are typically not involved in active operations. Evolvement can pose a personal risk and create liability to town. Once verified information is available, the emergency operations plan has the town managers bring that to the town council. Next, as I said, the chain of command ensures effective coordination. The police chief oversees operational decision and reports directly to town manager during incidents. This structure is outlined both in our town charter and operations plan. In real-time updates are not always practical. Fast-moving situations often produce rapidly changing information. Even I receive only partial updates and rely on the on-scene team. Attempt to update the council during an ongoing response could hinder operations and delay critical actions. Updates are provided by phone or email when feasible. Depending on the level and where we are in the, how long the situation may go, I tend to use email first. The reasoning is, everybody gets the same exact information, and I don't miss something versus on a phone call. Also, if it's 3:00 in the morning, I'm probably not going to call you because unless it's still going on at 7:00 in the morning, then I would call. And it's just, it's, the reason is, we want to make sure all this information goes to the same individuals at the same time. As, and just as a standard of practice with major incidents, we are right now doing a debrief to assess the response, and I don't favor any areas of improvement. So we do try to get the information out as soon as possible. Again, I was on vacation. I did get the text from Chief of Police. As soon as I received it, I was on the phone with him from my vacation, and we got the information out as soon as we could that morning to the council. Luckily, everybody was safe, and there was no large incidences.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions for the Town Manager? Council Blackstone?
Yes, I would just like to make sure you do follow up, because I personally know several people that get notices and did not get a notice.
And that's what we are looking at right now, getting into the weeds of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions or discussion? Council Dorblut?
This is in regards to the Plan H report from the shiret. I don't know if you've all read through the report. It's nicely done and quite encouraging and, you know, really uplifting to think about New Market in a positive way and with, you know, positive aspirations for the future. And I'm glad that we are, we're able to use the recommendations from the plan already. I'm sure that other committees besides the Transportation Committee has already taken recommendations and is actively working on signage, wayfinding, and parking, and EV chargers. As far as the Economic Development Committee is concerned, when has the committee last met? And is the membership still active? And if it isn't, maybe we should, rather than just going back to what was, reinstitute and start fresh and, you know, pull a new membership together for that committee?
If I may. I don't believe it's been active for probably eight to 10 years.
Yeah.
And I would also suggest that if it is active, to look at the charge of the committee.
Right.
The last time we had one, it was more to review, you know, some of it was to do, go forward with the gateway planning and reviewing some housing ordinances back in the 2012, which is a completely different world right now than it was back then. And I just would say that the committee would need to have a clear focus on what its role is as an economic development committee, especially because we already have the Community Development Corporation that could be assisting those kind of items as well.
Yeah. If I may. The final paragraphs in the report, I think, are quite important to read. Basically, the authors urge the, for this report to be shared as widely as possible with everyone in the community, and that the process that's used to, you know, take these ideas and, you know, make them real and work with them and move forward is one that's open to everyone and benefits everyone in the community. And from that angle, I think we should also think about the economic development. So that what we're doing here is something that benefits the residents of, the current residents of New Market and is trying to elevate all of us and is not, you know, kind of a narrow bringing in revenue through tax dollars. But it's a little bit, maybe a little bit broader and a little bit more inclusive of all the residents' ideas and wishes for the future. So with that, I'm wondering if, you know, how you all feel about a, or how we would go about reinstituting an economic development committee? Because I think it is a really important step to take for us to bring that topic, you know, to give it a home, essentially. Since we have one, but it hasn't been meeting, is it really active? Do we, do we need to, you know, recreate a committee? Is that something that we would want to do? So maybe that's a conversation we can have at the next, at the next meeting and think about what the charge for such a committee might be and how we would want to frame that so that it reflects a more of a, you know, community economic development perspective.
Thank you, Councilor Dorblut. Town Manager, would it be possible to dig up the original charter?
Yep.
And maybe circulate it so that we can at least have a starting point to see kind of what it was charged for?
That sounds like a good plan.
Okay. Other questions or comments for the Town Manager? Okay. Then we will move right on to committee reports. Any committee reports this evening? Councilor Glazberg?
The Arts, Culture, Tourism Commission met yesterday. There's some dates that I want to make sure that we share. On 6/21, there will be a art and garden tour. The last two years, it's been just a garden tour. It's expanding to include some artists now. The commission would appreciate if some or all of the councilors could be present at the, there's a, from 3:00 to 5:00 that day at the Rosa's Garden on Packers Falls Road. There will be a bit of like an auction and people gathering there. Then we will be doing, starting on 6/1, we will start the photo contest for this year. You remember last year, we had a photo contest that ran up to, and, yeah, up to the backyard bash. But this year, it'll be pet-themed, and the themes will be, there will be three: About Town, Huggles and Snuggles, and Funny, Indognito, and Catastrophe, which, you know, the commission was pretty proud of.
Catastrophe.
Yes. And then August 5th, this year, will be the Ice Cream Social, Tuesday, August 5th. Truffle will be playing the music that night at the park. And as far as I know, it'll be starting at 5:00, like it has years past. I will update you if that date changes, and I will talk about it again as we get closer. There was the library project that they've been talking about, doing the murals on the library. There was a presentation given to the library trustees. The, they kind of have a date of May 12 to give us the thumbs up or thumbs down on whether they are interested. The first time that they had a presentation did not seem like they were super interested in the idea. I think they have, you know, the feasibility study and a lot of things going on, so we'll see what they end up saying. The Art Garden Tour is looking for more gardens that want to participate. So if you go to the New Market Rec page on the website, and you're interested in showing a garden, you don't have to be present at your home if you want to have your garden be part of it. It'll just be listed, and people can go. And that's all.
Okay. Questions for Councilor Glazberg?
Is the Art and Garden Tour self-guided? Or is it just that, you know, they'll be, they'll be walking outside, so there's no need for people to be?
It is self-guided. For people who need transportation, there will be a sign-up at the Sunrise Sunset Center. And it'll be gardens, there'll be a walk for the artists down Main Street where they will be selling some of their art, showing their art. Each artist will be assigned a garden to do a piece of art inspired by the garden. Should be a good day. It's going to be all day long. That event from 3:00 to 5:00 is just where everybody gets together at one place, but it's going to be from like 10:00 till 5:00 or something along those lines.
Yeah, I've been to several of these. It's pretty impressive. There's some really amazing gardens in New Market.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other committee reports this evening? Wow. Okay. Quite a day for committees. We will move on to resolutions and ordinances in the first reading. And this evening, there is one. And that is Resolution 2024-2025-40, Designation of Authority for Clean Water and Drinking Water State Revolving Loans. Whereas the town submits loan applications with the Clean Water and Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Funds, and whereas it is required that the town council designate an authorized representative for the purposes of filing applications for loans in accordance with the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules and Chapter ENV WQ 500, furnishing such information data and documents pertaining to the applicant for a loan as may be required. In addition, the authorized representative is required for signing documents pertaining to the disbursement of funds to the loan recipient, and at the time of loan execution, is authorized to sign the loan agreement binding the applicant to the terms and conditions of the loan. Now therefore be it resolved by the New Market Town Council that the New Market Town Council designates Stephen Fornier, Town Manager, as the designated authorized representative for Clean Water and Drinking Water State Revolving Loans for the purpose of filing applications for loans in accordance with the New Hampshire Code of Administration, Administrative Rules and Chapter ENV WQ 500, furnishing such information data and documents pertaining to the applicant for a loan as may be required. In addition, Stephen Fornier, Town Manager, as authorized representative, is authorized to sign documents pertaining to the disbursement of funds, and at the time of loan execution, is authorized to sign the loan agreement binding the applicant to the terms and conditions of the loan. First reading, May 7, 2025. Okay. We are on to item 11, New Business and Correspondence. First item correspondence, is there any correspondence to be read into the record this evening?
There is none.
Okay. And the next item, closing comments by town councilors. Councilor Lamatina?
I took a road ride down Ashwab Road. I'm happy to report that, glad to report that the new bridge work is fine, the road is good. They did a good job, they did it on time. And now that 101 is back to normal, I can report that the traffic on Hershey Lane is back to normal. People aren't doing 60 miles an hour down Hershey Lane.
That reminds me.
Excellent.
Elm Street, odds are it's going to be closed two to four days next week. We're just waiting for clarification. But it shouldn't be as fast.
Doesn't bother me.
This is the reroute.
Yeah. So good work to the town.
Thank you very much, Councilor Lamatina. Councilor Ward?
Yes, I'd just like to give an update on New Market Cemetery Restoration Day that is coming up on Saturday, the 17th. Volunteers, people who are interested in volunteering, we will be starting at 9:00 at Pickering Cemetery on Ashwab Road, and we will be doing yard work there. We'll be cleaning, mowing lawn, we'll be picking up a brush and leaves, we'll be pulling out invasive plants, and we'll be doing that from 9:00 to 2:00. If we finish pickering in time, we will then move to a different cemetery, Burley, and continue there. And in the evening, we have an event open to the entire public at the Mill Space, just a celebration of New Market cemeteries and American history. It starts at 6:00, and at 6:45, the New Market Historical Society will give a presentation on the history of Pickering Cemetery and the American Revolution. A lot of the people who were buried there had, were very
had, were very involved in the revolution itself, is my understanding. And they're going to do a full presentation on that. Again, we, this is our first time ever doing this. We've gotten a lot of support, and we're hoping to get more support, too. So if you can come volunteer during the day, that'd be great. And if you can't, you can still, please, come to the celebration, learn a little bit more about our local history, impress all your friends and family. And
And what was the date again?
May 17, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. at Pickering in the morning. And then 6:00 p.m. is the party at Mill Space.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Oh, and anyone with questions can email me at bward@newmarketnewhampshire.gov.
NewmarketNH.
NewmarketNH.gov, yes.
Thank you, Counsel Ward. Any other closing comments? Counsel Blackstone?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the police and maybe the fire department for the, you know, they train for these kind of emergency situations, hoping never to use it. But, you know, they, obviously, under pressure, they were able to carry out the duties, and nobody got hurt. And I just want to thank them for excellent work. And then saving the ducks, you know, that was just icing on the cake.
Thank you, Counsel Blackstone. Any other closing comments?
Actually, one thing, and it might be just a question.
Yep.
So the municipal, the municipal lots that are, you know, kind of in front of Weaver's Row, or most of the downtown parking, is that, is that municipal? Is that public? Is that privately held? Like
I don't know which spaces you're talking about.
Like, so like, all that to say, there's about 200 spaces-ish in that lot. There's only about three handicap-accessible spaces, which I know is, it's, you know, below sort of the number that probably should be. It should be, you know, six if we're being really restrictive, seven if we're trying to, you know, kind of do it right. So I was really wondering if somebody could take a look at that.
Yep.
And I know that some had been kind of, you know, kind of appropriated for some outdoor seating by one of the restaurants. So, yeah, if we could get that updated and fixed so that New Market's accessible for everybody, that would be awesome.
Just what park we do have in there, we are only control, the municipality is only control of the 20 spots on the side. Those are private. However, if the site plan required disabled parking, then they'd have to have that number in there. So I'll have planning look at it.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And also, thanks to whoever fixed the pedestrian flashing lights that were broken sort of on the mill side. Appreciate that a ton. Okay. Any other closing comments? Okay, seeing none. Our next meeting is May 1, 2025. So we'll see y'all then. And if there are no objections, I will consider us adjourned.